All right. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, November the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Time is six o'clock. We're here in the Select Board Conference Room at Town Hall. This meeting's being recorded. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let Jason know. Uh, Jason, can you, as the veteran on the board, literally, can you lead us in the pledge today, since it was Veterans Day this weekend? Um, we haven't had to do this in a while, but um, we need to have a moment of silence for some folks that that have passed. Um, Giles Dagno, who was a fire commissioner, Joan Hagan, a third grade teacher at Woodland School and a member of the Housing Authority, and John Andrews, a World War Two vet and very active member of uh, our Veteran Services and Veterans Programs in the town. Um, well, for as long as I can remember, passed uh over the weekend. So if we could please have a moment of silence for those folks that have left us. Thank you. Uh, we'll start off with public comments. Uh, if anybody has anything they'd like to address the Select Board with that's not on our agenda tonight. Um, we'll start with the room. Anyone? How about on Zoom? Okay. Six oh five, close enough, perfect. Six oh five, appointment with EDC members. Inga Hodling, Washington, Craig Samuelson, and Greg Diley, mission statement and upcoming initiatives. And anyone else from the EDC that's here, come on up. You're more than welcome.
Well, we appreciate you meeting with us this evening. I know we have extended out to you all an invitation to come to our meeting. But what we wanted to do was to share our mission statement, which we've already done to the board. And Craig brought up a great comment. He said, well, as a seasoned member of the EDC, really, what are our parameters going to be? And what are the expectations from the board to allow us to perform? So that's why we wanted to have a conversation, because we have ideas. And we have three initiatives that we're rolling out that we want to accomplish by the end of this year. One of them is going to be a successful shop local dine local campaign again for the weekend of Thanksgiving. A website implementation that we hope to have live by the end of the year, which is going to be an index of our business community. And a resource guide for the members of our community to click and get to access so that we can keep the business local and also inform the community what businesses there are out there. And we've actually been surprised by how many businesses we're finding in town that aren't just around Main Drive, only drive. Our third initiative is we're going to do an engagement survey to the business community, asking them what can we do to help them. So this is going to be our first effort to get our name out there in a user-friendly format. And then we will invite them to a forum, whether it's here at the Town Hall, maybe using the auditorium or using the library based on how many people are going to contact us and say, yes, we want to come and have a forum. So that's what we've got planned by the end of this year, and we've only been rocking and rolling since the end of September. So, but we have a lot of other ideas. So we want to find out what is your vision for the EDC? And how can we support the community and also make you folks proud?
We felt that since we outnumber you by about three to one, we felt we would be pretty bold.
Well done, Frank.
And we wanted to be important, things Craig is is attracting businesses. I mean, obviously, there's always people that are touching base with the community. And EDC, you should have the right types of materials and promotional stuff so that we can uh make those available to people sort of as an initial intake before they start to decide, hey, are they going to hire a a firm to do due diligence and speak to the uh the town planner about what can be happen in certain zones? You know, in terms of either through special permits or by right uses, both that's when you really start to do the intake and people start really trying to, you know, evaluate, is this a community I want to go to? And then you start looking at the locations of things like that. Uh, because the people in the planning department are very important because they can also help people understand whether or not an area is served for infrastructure purposes, which is water, sewer, things like that, because people, you know, they're going to look at wanting to have these types of amenities. Where are they going to um, you know, evaluate sites against other sites and other communities? So, and that's where people like Randy Brown, John Goddard, and a whole group of other people come into play. Hmm. So that's important because that that in the end is is that navigates through the process. That's what's going to bring, you know, businesses in so we can diversify ourselves and we can get to a point where you know, you can create new growth without putting demands on other types of services like the schools and things like that. So it's about balance, because the real estate value just can't be the thing that 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 carries the the deal.
Inga mentioned the website. It will actually have three different audiences. Uh, one that she mentioned will be the residents telling what business is there and make it easy for them to find. Another will be the existing businesses, but another will be prospective businesses. We'll have this, the things you mentioned are the exact kind of things we want to have there.
Is there a template of that or you you still?
We're in the process of that being developed.
Okay. I mean, obviously, you can borrow things like that from other communities.
Correct.
That have advanced those efforts. So there's nothing like starting out with borrowing things from other ones. Oh, yeah.
So Carl, how can we perhaps make that happen? So let's say a Crystal Three Shop comes to the Select Board and says, you know, we we'd like to consider Southwick. How do we come into play?
Well, I mean, with a board as large as yours, you really should designate people from the committee to be facilitators, to take that person and then work with the administrative people who are here full time and help connect people. So that's the important thing is intake and then facilitating and connecting. So when you're going to have to figure out amongst the vast number of your people, who's going to be doing those types of things so that you don't have one person taking a phone call? And then all of a sudden, the other one who's used to doing it isn't getting contacted at all. It's going to be, because they're going to want to make sure that everybody's got their assigned functionalities and roles. And that's part of how, whether you're going to have subcommittees or just designees.
We do write down.
Right. And and the board does this. And the Select Board does this.
And plus you you, to your point, since you have like six hundred people on the EDC, you guys can have a a group or a couple of people, as long as it doesn't make a quorum. Like on the Select Board being as we are three, we usually have to designate one and we then reports back, huh?
That person works with myself.
Correct. We then reports back to the CAO and updates the board accordingly, depending on what's going on, because if we had two, well, then every time we met with somebody, it would be a a meeting. And so that's a problem. You guys are advantaged in that space. Um, and so certainly when something were to come up, if someone were to approach the town, um, because people approach the town in many different ways. Um, I don't want to get too far afield of our meeting, but this is an excellent opportunity to kind of discuss this, um, is it can come from state, right? Some branch of the government with some economic development or economic opportunity group within the government can come through Carl, because he's the main conduit into town to say, hey, company A is looking to cite a facility and we've identified six parcels in the Commonwealth. And and by the way, they're also looking at two in New York, two in Connecticut, two in Rhode Island. And so it's a competitive situation. It's also confidential because um, that's the nature of site selection. And and sometimes they'll come to you and you'll have three or four meetings with a prospective company like that. They don't tell you who they are. You're just meeting with their site selector. And they don't even give you an industry. They said, we're looking for this, 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 this. And you have a discussion. And eventually you get around to the point of either finding out whom it is or um, they tell you who it is. And then you have, you know, it sometimes you have to make certain cuts along the way. You know, we had one, um, not the one you're thinking of, um, that they wanted us to sign non-disclosure. And I said, that seemed counterintuitive to me. And the the site selector guy said, why? I said, because if I gladly sign it, I then promptly have to take it to the town clerk and record it, which makes it a public document, which is counter countered. We all have to kind of trust each other that we're going to, you know, keep this under wraps until a certain point at which there's a process to play out for um for anything that's going to come into town, you know, for permitting and use and what have you. Um, and a lot of times it's it's a big nothing burger, right? It's just they're using you to get to New York or they're using you to get to Connecticut or
Leveraging a better.
You know, to try to get a better deal for something else, or other times it is something that's very real and or it could be, and you don't know until two or three meetings in.
Quite a learning process, quite an educational learning process when you go through this.
One of the other things to do from an EDC standpoint, and the town is very good at this too, is working together with other stakeholders that have a role to play in the attraction of businesses to town. So, for example, you may have a roundtable with uh EverSource. Um, gas Verizon, well, it's EverSource. I was going to say Columbia Gas, but it's EverSource now, EverSource and EverSource.
Both of them now.
Both of them, to try to understand what's available to something at a given location to see if a site even qualifies. And to see if it's even worthwhile to have a discussion.
Utilities.
Right. Sewer is a is a big one, too. Randy's very helpful with that. If if, you know, someone, a lot of certain businesses will not cite on a a location that doesn't have a a sewer. And for good or for bad, that's how it is. So you have to look at that, too. Um, but I think that, you know, I, it should be part and parcel of the process now that once we get to a certain point, like if someone reaches out to us and say, we, you know, this is what's going on and you get to a certain a certain point, and we should probably talk more about what that is, is to bring in economic development. Is, and we've done it before with, you know, the previous chair, and I think you guys are in a um a way better position now. I think you have a very talented group that can bring a lot to bear and not and I'm not speaking disrespectfully, but not a pamphlet with the listing of restaurants and the local businesses. You have more to offer now. You have more to try to pitch. Why Southwick? And I think your website's going to do a lot for that. Greg, that's a good point to have those kind of three personas to it, right? To who you're who you're looking to address with that website, be very, you know, I don't know how you, you know, however you're going to do it, whether, you know, you click, you know, for business, for potential business, for residents, you know, you have those three things and they kind of take on a persona from there. That's great, because that's really what you're trying to do. Um, I I'd love to hear the mission statement, by the way, because I missed it so far. So why don't we have it?
Okay. The mission of the Economic Development Commission is to be a catalyst for measurable business and economic growth for the town of Southwick. We work in collaboration with the public officials and other town boards and commissions to attract, assist, and retain business in Southwick to support the town's long-term economic health in keeping with the town's rural character and goals. So in regards to what you said, Carl, about being um a point of contact. Um, currently, the way that we're structured, we're not a point of contact when it comes to a business knocking on our door. I have reached out to John Goodart and asked him to, you know, keep me in the loop of anything that's happening that we could be of assistance with. But what is the formal protocol for us to take it that next step? So that we can be a resource and a valuable resource with the team that we have as such communities around us do use the EDC as that.
I think when you get your website up and linked to the town, there would be an opportunity there for people looking at Southwick to reach you directly. And you should designate those members as as the contacts on that. I think John will be very good at steering people your way as well. Um, and I think on your website, what what I would like to have there is you promoting from there, promoting to businesses and
Potentially businesses.
Yep. And I would like you to promote Southwick's rural character, quality of living, our regional school system, our public safety complex, our various cultural, historic, scenic, environmental, and recreational amenities. Um, I think you could also have links to other state or regional funding opportunities there um for our current businesses as well as new ones to how to how to get funding to do these things would be a key thing there. Your business directory, of course. Um, and then also links to other entrepreneurial workshops that other organizations are holding for our own businesses for um, I think MDR has some on succession planning, for instance, and things like that. That would be helpful for our current businesses. So I think once you're up there and that exposure's there, pointing them to those designated members will help you get there. And I've asked you guys to get familiar with uh our zoning bylaws, too. Um, I think you know, plant, sitting in those planning board meetings is going to help you as well. And I would like you to be able to evaluate those businesses and have an opinion on them, to do some analysis on those businesses coming in. And have an opinion on it to recommend that this is a good business for our town. And put yourselves in front of the other boards and commissions that are making those decisions. Having done some research on what that, we want that economic impact. That is a long-term economic impact for our town. Not short term. We're looking for long term, right? And don't forget the people are part of the economy.
Pretty much the stuff that I had written down prior to coming here was Carl, Carl addressed some of it, Diane. Um, like, so my concerns would be, what are you going to do to attract businesses? What are your plans of you that that, you know, have you guys talked about that yet already, other than the websites and stuff like that? And I heard what Diane said, but I I guess the only place I would kind of differ on that was I would like to hear your opinions, um, but I I don't want things to be, I think every oper, every business opportunity should be presented. We shouldn't be correct. Whether it's a good fit or it's not a good fit, you know, that's what we're all here for, all the town boards, all, you know. I I don't want to see what happened years ago when I wasn't around. We we don't need that. That gave everybody a bitter taste. I've talked to several people that are like, well, you're not business friendly. And I don't want to see that. So um, that would be the one thing I just, I want to make sure everything is vetted properly. And Carl, Mr. Chairman, I don't know. I I want you guys as the tip of the spear. My, I envisioned you guys as find it for us, you know, help us find those businesses, you know, we want you to help us bring in those economical benefits, you know, financial and otherwise.
So that's a business development arm that we have talked about, but we haven't obviously done anything about it as of yet. That's another reason why we'd like to find out what parameters do we have.
That's, I bet, so I said, Carl, Mr. Chairman, I don't know.
Start of a conversation.
What we would want to do, how we would approach this, what would, you know, I guess that would be.
You can have people contact the community different ways. They might contact the town administrator's office, they might contact yourself with the robust, you know, webpage you're going to have in all that. So people are going to, the intake is going to happen different ways. So you want to be careful about limiting it to, gee, I I can't talk to you. I have to refer you to this person. You want people to be able to have the conversation and do the intake. Because that's going to be part of the first impression they're going to have on the community.
Correct.
So that's important. And then it's a matter of just making sure that, you know, whoever's in the different roles knows they have an obligation to be communicating with, you know, the people in certain offices in Town Hall. Very important thing. I mean, last time when the board made the process of, you know, reconstituting the board and and filling the membership and later on that evening, what did we talk about? I said to the board, you know, when you you want you want to decide what the next um objectives and position description modifications for the position that I'm going to be vacating to retirement, by the way. Um, it was uh that you would be, you'd be deciding what things would you value, what things would you want to have in certain position descriptions and what duties that could be in there? Because it just makes good sense. It's good business. So that was part of our discussion. And the and the outreach and Carl, you're a hundred percent correct, Jason, as well. And I think the like you said, the outreach comes from a bunch of different places and it's not a singular silo. So it's not like, oh, um, I forgot who it was that brought us. So the the one that we met with um six years ago now, right, that they didn't made, asked us to sign an NDA. So we had a meeting. In a formal meeting, I was assigned to to meet with them as the designated Select Board designate. We brought in EDC. The chairman of EDC, we had a roundtable with all these folks with EverSource and Verizon and all these folks. But I, that's not to say that if we had a spectacular website and some spectacular other information that they would not have found out about us also, or done their homework before they came to that first meeting, because I felt at that first meeting, we were introducing them to the town of Southwick. They had just seen a plot of land from thirty thousand feet. Um, and uh, by the way, that was a one million square foot development. Never went anywhere, but it was a sizable piece of property and a sizable chunk of building that could have gone on that property. Um, but we didn't know at the time, you got to take the meeting, right? And if the same thing happened again tomorrow, we would assign somebody, probably bring someone from EDC, go to the meeting and find out what's in the package before it gets, you know, and when they unwrap it, as it unwraps.
Take the meeting.
You have to take the meeting, because it may, you know, you may find out that, you know, it's it's a, pardon my expression, a crap sandwich, but you have, if you didn't go to the meeting, you never found out. It might be the ideal opportunity. It could also be something that probably wouldn't make no sense in the town of Southwick. Um, and that and that's at everyone's peril, because as you can see, what, you know, what happens when when the package is unwrapped and it's not something that's really tenable. Um, but I think so, it's going to come from a variety of different ways. The same thing goes when if somebody approaches, comes to an EDC meeting or reaches out via the website, then you should have a protocol for how you notify the CAO so that they can involve someone with on on the Select Board or other boards and committees to, you know, to bring to bear as, you know, kind of a sales team for the town of Southwick to sell it, because that's what we're doing, right? And I think that that's the the key role. And, you know, Carl's correct. I mean, there's a couple of things in the job description of an incoming CAO that we need to talk about and 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 look at because the jobs changed in in the couple of years since Carl's been here. And, you know, one of those is kind of, I don't, the master plan kind of calls for or discussed having, you know, some presence in Town Hall for economic development. I don't think it's within our wherewithal or budget right now to have like an advancement officer in the town of Southwick. But if it were a component, now that we have a CAO, an assistant CAO, perhaps it is uh, you can apportion a portion of the CAO role to be kind of that advancement person. Um, amongst other, you know, I have some other ideas that we're going to talk about, you know, either this meeting or next as far as what those changes to the job description go. But I think economic development plays a key role. And, you know, as it um it's going to be a lot. I think you guys have a lot of, a lot to bring to the table, more than we ever did before. So in in that regard, I, you know, I'm enthusiastic about it. It's also going to be interesting to see how it how it comes together. I mean, the website website piece is going to be great, because I think the one that you guys had before, you know, was not um awesome. And I don't think it was easily found, which is a problem for a website. So hopefully the new one, it will be better. And, you know, we'll be able to support it directly from the town website, too. Um, so that's just my thought on it. And, you know, I think the mission statement was great. You know, I remember going to a meeting with um yourself and you you asked me point blank, what do you want? What do you want me to do? What can we do? And I think my answer at the time, because it was a little bit of a high stakes meeting that night, I was like, get me a doctor, right? We didn't have a doctor's office in the town of Southwick. And we we were just, we just met at at the other place that fortunately we have one and you were there as well.
Right.
And uh, but yeah, now we have a a doctor and a psychologist, psychiatrist, one of those. Um, right in town, but probably for the first time in the history of the town of Southwick for a while, we didn't even have a, we didn't have a doctor's office. And I think that's a key component of a healthy community, no pun intended. So, you know, I think that's one of the other things to do from EDC is to take a look from your own and partially as a real results of your survey and 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 also you're going to have to take a little bit with a grain of salt. I know I see it on social media, especially in Westfield for some reason, but get us a Trader Joe's. Get us a, guess what? The town doesn't have a lot of to say about what you get, right? They can be, they can make the town attractive, but it all, it comes down to population, income, traffic, um, vehicle counts past certain locations. That drives everything, right? Um, so I think that part of your survey should identify some needs in the community. And then probably we all put our heads together and say, okay, how do we move the needle on that? What do we, what do we need or want? And and how would the, is 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 it feasible? And how do we make that possible?
Um, and the master plan has spelled out a lot of that to guide you.
Yeah, the web website definitely probes for what current businesses think would be the most important actions we could take. And I I've long thought that the best way to attract appropriate businesses is to make the environment for current businesses much better. Better that is, the more word of mouth will spread, the more that people will feel like, yeah, this is a good place to have a business.
No doubt. And I think, you know, if you look at the housing stock and you look at people that live in the town and and what what that drives and also the recreational opportunity should be a catalyst. So how do you bring complementary? You know, I call planets orbiting the sun, if you will, you know, bring complementary businesses to town. And then, you know, I think you're, sometimes the survey, a survey will you'll get a lot of requests that are not tenable, but take that on on the buy and say, okay, where where can we go from here in relation to that? So, and then and all, it may identify other things, too. I know if I can plug the high-speed internet piece, right? That's going to be a key driver for a lot of businesses going forward. Um, how does that play into it? Or does that, you know, does that pull some weight on the website that we have this, this is available everywhere in town? Blah, blah. And this, for a business, this is a huge piece. You know, stable, reliable, high-speed, um, you know, internet connectivity. It's it's a driver. And and right now, and we have some high speed today, but you can't sell a home today without high-speed internet. It's not possible. Be the same as selling a house without running water. So I think that that, you know, those types of things. And what else does, what are the, you know, unique value proposition that the town of Southwick brings to prospective businesses vis-à-vis and, you know, south of us is pretty competitive and even and north of us, too. So how do we, you know, how do we draw?
So I think we can get past the first meeting. Like you said, that has to happen no matter who has it, you know. Um, that has to take place. I think what would be important is to establish some kind of a procedure after the first meeting or second meeting, whatever, just like if you go into some town, you want to build a house. Here's all the different steps you go through right to your CEO. I think it would be nice if we could develop something like that. Or a business, at what time do we sort of merge? With what communities do we merge? And where does it go from there? I I just, I think that would be important for a business to be able to look at something like that and say, okay, I understand what's ahead of me. I have a stomach for it or I don't, or.
Hmm. And I think that it's also part, I know Diane's mentioned it several times, of kind of having a concierge, right? So someone who's going to help someone through that process. And whether it's someone from EDC or someone from this board or even the CAO or, because it, you know, to to walk through the regulatory process. Um, and so it's not approached serially. You know, you kind of lay it out. Um, years ago, the the planning board had done kind of flow charts, if you will, like a little packet from from their perspective.
I remember.
But, right. And they were, they were very helpful, but it was, it was chapter one eighty-five and chapter three fifteen. Somebody forgets to tell somebody about, oh, the conservation or the Board of Health or, you know, or Anrad or what's that other one you need from the state?
In Ohio.
Uh, no, the
MEPA?
Yeah, MEPA. Yeah, Mepha Island. Mepha can take a year, right? You forget about that in your process and say, oh, boy, we got to do Mepha, see in a year, that type of thing. And. You know, you have to look at the state piece of it too, because it does come into play as far as if you're being consultative to a prospective business. Yeah, certain things, trip thresholds that make you have to do Mepha or not. But and then um.
All right, that's not, that's, you know, in in a lot of communities that have what are called the community development department. Like Jim Boardman used to handle that stuff for Westfield. That's, that was like an umbrella agency within a. A larger setting, but like you said, we don't have that type of a of a structure here, you know?
But doesn't mean that.
Can't restructure. Multiple positions to do that, but it would be more than, but some of that would have to be vested in more than just a C A O function.
Correct. But I mean, it's also, you know, from the from this board and also the land use board, they're very friendly. They're very, you know. John Goddard is great. He'll willing to talk to anybody and walk through a process. But it's also helpful as your board comes up to speed. Now Craig, you've been doing this a long time and you've been through a lot of the. Process on zoning and and Board of Appeals and and so on and so forth, but. And then so as far as, you know, helping, if someone were to come in through. Any avenue and you kind of put a small team together to kind of be consultative to somebody. I think you can get a good chunk of what Mr. Boardman used to do in Westfield for someone and be helpful. And and not dissuasive, like. You know, you, oh, you have to go to conservation and oh, boy, that's this and we're planning is this and you need this permit and that permit. You lay it all out and you document it up for, you know, flow chart it out for somebody and you say, you need to do this, this, this and this. Okay, then it it it's consumable.
Yeah, I think with large, large entities coming to town and you want to know the step by step process. I think we've even had the town attorney lay out the stuff. So because it's worth the value of the opinion letter. To make sure that these entities know what they're going to have to go through the steps in the community. But it has to be a really large project to want it.
We are planning to. Go to the monthly meetings of the Western Mass EDC. I I spoke at some length, Rick Sullivan, who said he knew you. And uh. We will have a representative there.
Right, and we and we have dealt with Rick. Rick has been a conduit for, you know, informing us about business opportunities that. Come through visit organization as well as the state agency that Doug has mentioned. So. It is interesting. They don't all originate through any one entity. There are people come in unsolicited or they have these, you know, these companies that Doug talked about, site selection companies. Or agencies, you'd be amazed at how things end up coming to us. And then you just have to see where it makes sense for the community, but you have to take the lead.
Yeah, well, that's why we want to find out the best practice, but she said that's what the meetings are about. What are the best practices across the whole Pioneer Valley?
Because I will also assure as I'm sitting here, guarantee you that whatever you plan for is exactly what will not happen.
Right.
Right? It's going to be some mass, put a word after it, quasi public, private consortium thing. That brings something to somebody and now we, you know, but if you've got a solid process, it'll still work. You can adapt. If you assume that they're going to come from the website or they're going to come from mass EDC or. Is going to be mass econ, mass development, there's mass. There's a bazillion of them out there named mass this and the other, and they all have little piles of dollars that they use to attract different businesses. And housing, whatever, exactly.
We, when you designate this group, it's going to be specific to that function, along with the other functionalities, you're going to designate your people. You know, we we look forward to, you know, someone making contact with us and having that first group meeting. Hopefully that'll happen before my time ends.
Well, I would, I would also without. I would say do that sooner than later and designate those folks sooner than later, so that when we do have something that comes up, that. Me from the select board can work with that group directly straight away.
And once we get the results from our community outreach as well, we find out what they're looking for in the business community. We'd like to have another meeting with you folks to share with you our findings to then help direct us as to. Where we might be able to do some business development.
Hundred percent. Hundred percent.
Well.
Thank you very much. Very productive. Appreciate it. Six fifteen liquor license update from Hilltop Cafe on status of use. Anyone? Anyone? Come on up. How are you?
I I used to ask questions, uh licensing board?
We are the licensing board.
Lisa's not, she says works for you guys.
Correct. Also the select board X, we have a lot of hats that we wear.
There's seven.
Road commissioner, sewer commissioners, fire commissioners, police commissioners, license committee. Dog hearing officer.
That too.
So uh by way of introductions, I'm Doug Moblen, Diane Gale, Jason Brown, Carl Steinhardt, C A O.
Nice to meet you.
How are you?
Good, I guess.
Excellent. What's going on at the Hill?
What was like, no, I'm kind of confused about.
We're kind of just reaching out to everybody. It's coming up on relicensing time.
Right.
And um. We've kind of just been reaching out to everybody to come in and touch base. It's been a while.
So you're bringing everybody in?
Eventually, yes. We got a couple on the agenda tonight and we have a couple that. You know, the first two we brought in are, you know, one is a. Uh, the first two are, you know, places that we've been told have been closed or not open the hours for their license. So we kind of just want to figure out where we are and what's going on.
Yeah, well, the place is open. Just until business picks up, I'm not going to be open. It's not much like I thought it would be open. There's people there, I stay open. I've been there till one thirty, two o'clock in the morning and then restock until three. But if there's no business, doesn't make sense. If I'm sitting there for an hour and a half by myself watching TV. Then why would I stay? You know what I mean? You know, bills are being paid with what comes in. So I can't see a need to. Object myself to three o'clock in the morning getting home.
Don't blame me one bit. So what are the hours today? What do you, what hours have you been keeping?
I usually open at five. Until the last customer leaves. So if last customer wants to stay till one thirty, I've stayed there till one thirty, like I said, till two in the morning. The people there, I stay open.
Monday to Saturday, Monday to Sunday.
The only days I'm closed, I'm closed on Tuesdays and Wednesdays because there's just nothing. For me, even like I said, I'm open this evening, but obviously I'm here, but. I'm open this evening. Even then, it's like you said, I'm the only place open really on my street. Business just is. We're there.
Yeah, just, you know, I. People may have taken what I said the other day about, you know, somebody's not using something the right way, we should take it away from them. Well, in the real world, that's the way I would do it, but. Um, my concern is, you know, a lot of people don't even know you're there.
Obviously, you guys didn't even know.
No, no.
Did you check with the police department? Do they ever go by there? You know, they drive by every night.
I hear from a lot of other people. That, that, you know, they they're curious.
So we're open, we're solid.
That's great, you know, I wouldn't have known.
Is it open regularly?
No. We're open. Only days we're closed, Tuesday and Wednesday.
Throughout the year.
Since October. Since you lifted all the COVID thing. It reopened.
So you've been open since October this year, every day.
Last year. Twenty twenty two.
I live close by there. I don't see the sign all the time on open.
It's there. I I mean, I just feel like, don't take it the wrong way, but I feel like you're accusing me of saying something untruthful.
Nope.
I, like I said the other day, if I don't care who it is, if a constituent comes to me, has a question and and I'm going to, I'm going to pose it. That's what I got here for. I'm not trying to be confrontational, adversarial at all. You just kind of seem like you're a little agitated, but I can see that. But uh, you know, all I want to know is what's going on. That's what I was voted to do.
Right.
Find out, ask people, so that's what I'm doing. And if if it's working, great for you. And you're using your license the right way, I got no problem with it.
So I said. I think the place is running okay. I mean, I'd love to have more business. But I have the TVs going, I have sports on. You know what I mean? So I just. Before COVID, it's doing pretty good. And then after COVID, there are rebounding places.
That's pretty, you know, that. You know what I do, that even that town's dead. There's a lot of places that have gone. Way the dodo bird because of COVID, so I get it. We just, you know, I just want to know what's going on. People come to me, like I said. It's my job to find out what's going on.
Right. You know, just hear things, you know, saying.
Well, what did you hear?
A lot of people are saying it's not open and I'm saying it is. That's the kind of like, none of here telling you it's open and then. Somebody here says that they've been by it and never see it open. You know, so I just find it a little disheartening. You know what I mean? Like I said, the police see it, you know, they drive by, they've stopped in several times to do a safety check.
Yep.
I mean, but I've never called them, I've never had to go to that place for any reason.
Well, that's good.
Well, no, I'm just saying it's but quiet.
Okay.
I don't make the papers like this.
That's a good thing too.
Right.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Six thirty? Anyone here from the Franklin House? How are you?
I'm okay. Good to see you. Other than the obvious, I'm doing as good as could be expected. I come to you. Owning and representing the oldest business in the town. I'm actually the fifth generation, the son who runs the family business. And when the opportunity presented itself to purchase this parcel across the street with a restaurant and a liquor license on it. I went. It took me a while to put it all together, but I got it together and I did it. So I made my arrangements. We started the process. I went and Rob helped me with all the paperwork for your liquor license stuff. And I did all that. And then while you were moving through the process, my wife and I and my number one man over here all got COVID. I was out of work for a few weeks. My wife was hospitalized for four months. She was on a ventilator. She was actually getting off the ventilator the day I was supposed to come here for my hearing. And I was told not to come here. I should go and see my wife, because if something happened to her, I would never forgive myself for the rest of my life. So I did that. I made it through it. Went through the rest of the process and I believe we closed on the real estate in December of twenty one. As we progress through that. Um, we started in there trying to clean and stuff like that because he was a. A huge fan of extension cords and stuff like that, so we just wanted to clean up things and make things a little nicer. Um, and uh. Going through this process. Everything was going really good through the spring and then um.
I think I'm aware.
On July fifteenth.
Yeah.
I was run over out in front of the marina. Was nearly killed. The cops told me I was projected twenty feet, got ten staples in my head. Spent a week in the hospital, three surgeries, lost a toe. Didn't walk for three months. All this into is taking care of my wife at home on oxygen from COVID, because she had made it home. So I went through that process in July. I just got back on my feet in October. And then on October nineteenth, my wife had a relapse. Went back to Bay State, was rushed back to Bay State, put back in the ventilator for the third time. And where she stayed for a month. And then in Thanksgiving, she was transferred to Beth Israel in Boston. Which I drove to every day for three months or four months. Four hours a day. So that. Between this. And. This. And this. That's why it's not open. And I apologize to the board. But I did know that something was going to have to be done very soon. So we are in the process of wrapping up things at the marina. And then I'm going to put a concentrated effort on getting it. Finish cleaning it up, get it open and then satisfy the board. My daughter's going to help me with it. But uh as she was in the same predicament as me between losing me and losing her mother, it's just been a very strenuous, very hard time. And I know y'all heard about it, but I wanted to come in and explain where I am. And how I got where I am now.
How much more work do you think you have to do?
I don't know, there isn't a whole lot. We can finish cleaning it up and get it open, so I'll get on it, get it done relatively soon. As this gentleman behind me spoke, you know, this isn't the best season to try to open, to get something moving, but we got to do it because it has to be moving. I understand that.
Do you have, you have a thought like when? Not going to hold you to it.
Hopefully by the end of the year. Hopefully by the end of the year, if not right after that. So I just need to get the, you know, the Marina stuff's taken care of and I go put a concentrated effort on that. I just haven't been able to do it.
I know when we last spoke, you had had a hell of a year.
Yes. Yep. Not to add insult to injury, but between going to Charlton the first time, a deer hit my car, totaled my car. And then I was involved in another accident going over Boston, so it's been a really hard time. But I managed to trudge through it.
Was that license renewed for twenty three?
Oh, yeah.
Because we only have twenty one. Uh, twenty two paperwork here.
Yeah, I'm not sure what Lisa put in there, but. The license.
It's up to date.
So it's on your wall, right?
Jason?
Mr. Saunders, I I did not know about your wife and your family problems. I I and I'm very sorry for your loss.
It was very hard.
Again, like I told Mr., uh, was it Lenahan? I'm not here trying to single people out. I'm just trying to hear what's going on. People come to me.
I have no argument.
They want to know.
I have no argument. I can't stand here and argue. We didn't tell you it's open because it's not. His business is open, mine's not. But I understand that and I knew that I need to do something. I was just trying to get some of the boat stuff behind me and then get over there and do it. So we're trying to maintain the other thing that's, um, I'm a big history guy, um. People have asked me before about selling the package store. And I won't sell the package store because my father granted that license to my uncle and he sat in your seat in nineteen fifty five. And a lot of people don't realize it, but the license at the Franklin House was our license originally. And then it was taken and moved over there by the Desmonds. So I was tickled via opportunity to get it back. I just want to do something with it, so. My wife was unsure at first what to do and I, so like I said, I kind of gave it to my daughter, new son in law for a wedding present. And told him, let's do this and make something out of it. She wants to preserve the history of the whole business that was there. With some new trucks and she has a chef for her husband, so she's.
Is this fine gentleman in the back here?
Nope.
Oh.
Nope.
That was the quickest no ever.
Must be the electrician.
The electrician's son. There you go. So. Well, have at it. Okay. I appreciate the opportunity to come and explain it to you myself. It's just been really very, very hard.
Will you be Wednesdays through Fridays?
As far as I know, as far as I know, when we did it, he was open from Wednesday to Saturday. I don't know how much you guys knew about this guy.
Stayed a Friday and then Saturday twelve to twelve. Close Sunday.
He was an interesting eccentric individual.
Your plan would be to keep those same hours?
I believe similar stuff. If we need to change anything, I would come and ask you about it.
Different on the other page, but then.
Is it?
I'm not sure if it's. Yeah, well, that one, well, you signed it, but it says it's for the Crepes Tea House. We're doing, we're cleaning up our paperwork too while we're at it.
Yeah.
So um.
It's a bit confusing here.
On your, on the hours. On your, on the hours of operation, it says.
But that's twenty, but that's twenty one, it was.
Yeah, I know, who knows, but it says Monday to Friday. Five to twelve, Saturday twelve to twelve, Sunday to Tuesday closed, but it's signed for the double A management. LLC DBA Crepes Tea House.
Oh, okay.
But, but and you crossed out Mr. Gerard's name and signed yours.
Yeah, see, I never read the Crepes part, but when I saw Gerard on there, I just signed it with my name after.
We're working on all fronts here, so.
The air is human.
It'll be clean the next day.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And to really ma- mess it up takes the government, so we're working on. Again, sorry for your loss.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
What's the second oldest business in the town?
I thought it was Priti's.
Okay, what's the, now the second oldest business in the town of Southwood? Figured I'd know. Anyone else gonna take a gander? Yeah, I would say that'd be up there.
No, I forgot to bring the paperwork with me, but I have copies of the paperwork. Where my family had license number one, which was at the inn.
At the inn?
At the inn, it's a handwritten license. Cindy has a copy of it in the file in my store. She couldn't believe it.
I, I, I knew that, one of the first things I learned when I moved here, I was watching a videotape of something or other and they were talking about this. And it's been written before, so it must be true. If it's the oldest business in the town.
Yep.
I was curious if any can think of two, three.
Remember who the second.
Two and higher, cuz Priti's is unfortunately no longer.
Right.
But uh, we do wish you continued success in what you do.
Keep trying. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. We'll have the next tranche in for our next meeting. Couple more, I think it's a good idea to kinda get an update from, as license commissioners, not everybody had a chance to.
Jay said it mentioned certain ones, so I think the other ones that he had asked for, we're gonna have come in.
Yeah.
I think tonight we're getting an update from Prim.
Right.
Cuz that's in your, um. That's in your folder under another item.
Would you like to take that out of order, lady and gentleman, since Jen's here?
I have no opposition to that at all.
Hi.
Hi.
Come on up. Sure.
How are you doing?
Great, how are you?
Good. What's going on?
So, did you get a, um, an email from their attorney?
Lisa had put it in our package, yeah, it's under your, um. Under your. Yeah. Back to the police chief, uh, for another matter. But yeah, if you have it here.
Yes. So the property is being conveyed back to you. For my nominee and we will nominate somebody or. Put it back in the lineup, but chances are pretty good that we'll, we'll guys won't wind up.
We're gonna have a different DBA yet.
Definitely, yeah. So it'll be a whole new process, have to go back to Boston.
I'm sorry?
They'll have to go back to Boston too after it does.
So it's gonna be renewed as the.
Prime, I'm gonna.
Prime three.
Do other inspections and then, um, as soon as we get that person, I just don't see it happening in the next six weeks, but it'll be very close.
Cuz you have to come to terms with whoever the next person's gonna be, right?
So what are you thinking, Jen, before you have somebody in there?
I'm hoping right as the new year comes, that's, that's the prime. But like they all said, that's not the best time to open, so.
When is the best time to open?
Well, summer, spring. Mar- March is ideal at that place. If you've been running a business from March till October, November, you'll do good.
Same page as they are.
Both places pretty much. Dare I say it, turnkey, I was gonna use the word, but I hate to ever use that word, but.
Everything in there is brand new. So pretty much from top to bottom, the place has been redone, whoever goes in there is, is gonna need this shit. This probably won't be me, hopefully. So is it correct that it is renewed under prime?
Yes, that's what they were intimating from this, yes, that's what they're. That holds the license until it's transferred.
And I'll be the contact doing all the inspections we know.
What's the benefit of doing that, Carl? Well, it doesn't lapse, right, if you don't renew it, it lapses and. There's issues, you know, with. They put standing the paperwork, Secretary of State, all those types of things. It is a property interest, it's what gives the value to the property. Correct, a liquor license, so without it, it has much diminished value.
I was leading the witness, but thank you.
That's just making sure I understand as well.
Why we have, right, I think it, it kinda does make sense. Yeah, do it and then transfer.
Okay.
Whatever, every one or two years, start to renew the transfer later.
Okay.
Thank you very much, good to see you.
You too.
Now. We need to acknowledge payroll warrant number two, four, one, zero from November seventh, the amount of two hundred and eighty one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and eighty five cents. And I need a motion for the open session minutes of eleven, six.
I reviewed them, found nothing out of order.
I didn't see anything that stuck out to me either, so. Yeah, yeah, you can say, I'll make the motion to accept the open meeting minutes from last week's meeting.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Bron, aye.
Diane Gell, aye.
And the executive session minutes of November sixth.
Thank you very much for your time.
Hey, thank you, good to see you. Have a good night. I'm gonna need a motion first.
I will make a motion to accept the executive session minutes.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Diane Gell, aye. Jason Brown?
Hi. You can't be the only one to do it.
Good boy. All right. Caught up in my play out there. All right, so now we have. Well, we just got a, a sense of theme, here's a one-day liquor license for.
It is.
The rec centers, it is the holidays, uh, for the Agawam Karate Christmas Party. God help anybody who misbehaves at a karate party. Um, on December second from six to eleven. Um, and this is by former Sergeant Kirk Sanders.
Well, I think he's, he's calling it as the president.
As president of the rec center.
Nothing to do with this.
But usually we, uh, I, I don't think, was there a request to waive the police department? They usually tend to.
No officer required.
Correct. So subject to a, oh, there it is, he attached advisory for Fontluff event.
Yeah, the police, the, the. It's here, it's in the, uh.
Yeah. I got you.
Chief.
So barring any objections from. Any of the other. Groups located on here, oh, there was, there was the chief, I saw it on there, no officer required for the. Police chief. Entain a motion to grant a one-day for. The Southwick Rec Center for December second from six PM to eleven PM.
I will make the motions for the, uh. Granting another liquor license for the karate party.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Bron, aye.
Diane Gell, aye.
Okay, next is the, uh, you have a letter in your file from DPW Director Randy Brown. Uh, regarding, uh, contracted. Here we are again, aren't we? Contracted, uh. Wow, folks, snow and ice removal contract.
You already approved the, the rates at an earlier meeting, so now you're just approving the roster.
Correct.
And this is so that he can sufficiently man. Through all these different contractors to address all of our roads, so you're looking at, what, twelve? Sixteen upwards of twenty-two pieces of equipment to complement our home. So that we can be responsible with snow and ice removal.
And the first one, no conflict being.
They all, they all get to bid, anybody gets to bid.
Being an elected official, is that an issue?
That's, there's only. All people get an opportunity to work our community and bid on.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
The Water Commission has very little to do with appointing snow and ice.
That's your barrier, that's your.
Yeah.
Right.
Frozen water.
She does, right?
Yes, at a molecular structure.
Just ask in the question, observation, ask the question.
No, it's a good question, but it, it, it just. Sometimes you have to file, I don't think he does for this, but, uh. He does other work for the town today. Um, anyway, entertain a motion and it's, it's a fitted process, right? Anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the list of, uh, recommended contractors from. DPW Director Brown.
I'll second that.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Bron, aye.
Diane Gell, aye.
Okay. Okay, I mean, you might need a calculator for this one. Uh, the library needs approval to deposit thirty-one dollars in cash into the library's gift account.
I will make the motion to accept the thirty-one dollars or allow them. To deposit thirty-one dollars into their gift account.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Bron, aye.
Diane Gell, aye.
And. The library, give it the library ticket away, they need to recycle nine monitors, seven computers and two printers. So need a motion to approve surplusing those items.
I will make the motion to surplus the, uh, list of library items.
A lot of this stuff comes through, um, as grants.
Mm-hmm.
So they're in the process of renewing all the stuff with a new, um, allocation of things.
I'll second that.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Bron, aye.
Diane Gell, aye.
And now the motion's off the floor, the, um, just so you know, I did meet with, uh. Lynn. Just after the last budget cycle, cuz there was, uh. The budget meeting got a little testy with the library trustee. Um. That's, as far as funding for the library and the mechanism by which we, the formula that they use and what they use money to buy technology for and so on and so forth. I think we're all square now, but, um. Yeah, a lot, to what Carl said, they do get some grants that they use to buy some technology, they also use some of their regular operating budget to buy some technology. Along with their books and everything else that they buy. Just an F one, and that was right after the budget.
Them and police are the only ones that consistently have another fund source to be able to acquire those types of things.
Correct, but the, uh, the library trustee was, uh, talking about bake sales and selling brownies and. And it was, it was playoff base, so I met with Lynn directly and, and had a nice chat with her and we're all on the same page. It's true though, wasn't it? Uh, request for police chief to make Sergeant Thomas Crocker the designated liquor license agent and liaison to the local licensing board. Seems like a good idea. Since he's the detective sergeant.
Right, that's the way it's been in the past.
I'll make the motion to accept the chief's recommendation to appoint Sergeant Crocker as the liquor licensing agent and liaison.
I mean, I think he's just doing that to, just to inform you because he has the right of assignment.
That was the second.
Uh, request you to make. Well, let's just memorialize it, will you, Doug Mogul, aye?
Yeah, Jason Bron, aye.
Diane Gell, aye.
While we're on the topic, Carl, can you? Query the chief and ask who is the designated. Officer that's in charge of used cars in the town of Southwood from the licensing. Authority and.
I think it's, I think it's Sergeant Miles, but I will check.
That's what I said too.
Okay, I can do that.
Review and approve proposed parking expansion adjacent to town hall. Carl?
Yeah, in the last. Year or two, I've had some discussions with, um. Uh, John Wally, who is the owner of the property just south of us here about, um. Um, whether or not some of that parcel. Would lend itself to, uh, being, um, examined as an overflow parking space for our, our building here. Because if you drive into this facility on certain times. You find it difficult to find a parking place. Um, and that's, people stop parking on the grass. And when you start looking at the parcel we have here. Everything to the left of the driveway is really park property. So that's earmarked for them. And, you know, we have to evaluate whether or not we wanna, uh. You know, start taking up any more of the, uh, the green grass and the lawn out back there for additional parking next to the basketball courts. Or whether or not a budding property may, um. You know, give us that flexibility that we don't have. Now, so. Uh, let's see, about a month ago, two months ago, John and I and. Um, Mr. Lebec happened to be here on another project working for the, uh. Um. Put the parking rec and the council on aging and we just happened to. Go out here and we start having some dialogue about, hey, what would it take from a, uh. Point of view and step-by-step process to evaluate. The use of the, uh, land back there, so Mr. Goddard. And Mr. Lebec have been starting to, uh, research that so that the board will. Have an idea about, hey, is this something that you're interested in doing? Does it make sense to do it, what would be the process to do it, what would be the expense to do it? Cuz you really just can't grow land, so if you, if you have an opportunity where you can acquire something. Then you really gotta think, um, you know. Gotta think seriously about what it would take and whether or not you wanna do that. You know, so, and that's what this does, this represents that particular opportunity. And we have a landowner that's, you know, willing to have those discussions with us, but we still need to go through the process of what it would take to do that. So if this is something we're interested, we should be thinking about going over this as a, a budget process item. So that's what you have in front of you.
Are you talking about acquiring that property or a piece of the property?
It would be in the, yeah, the rear of it, but. It would have to be discussed about whether or not it would be a, um. Excuse me, acquiring or whether or not it would be an easement depending upon what the zoning's. Um, the size of the lots and the zoning cost from, that's something that is.
Coming in somewhere like in here, correct, is that what you're thinking?
Exactly, you'd be, you know, you'd probably end up losing that, that end spot if we drive in and maybe have them ramp down into the water.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there'd be, you'd have to have a sufficient amount of width. And, and then go and look at it, so that's where you got issues related to wetlands. Uh, bordering vegetation, so all of that stuff has to all be factored in.
But are you talking about all of this? Or just enough to throw extra parking spots in?
I, I, I don't know, I, I don't wanna be limited to, but because. Depending upon what you find for bordering vegetations and other particular issues.
Yeah.
You might decide, that might dictate how you're gonna configure it here. If you're trying to stay away from these issues over here.
Mm-hmm.
So.
That's what I meant.
We're gonna.
So that's why. You know, if it's something the board's interested in. Then we can go for a walk. Do a site visit. Bring the right people. With the right, uh, skill sets and do a walk back, back there. And see, um. You know, what makes sense and, and how we would do it and. And how that affects issues, like I said, with the, uh, the things that Mr. Levec has pointed out in his, uh. Uh, scope of services, yeah. But you're not gonna get too many of these opportunities to do something like this unless you wanna start taking away other, other land for other purposes on the parcel.
Be tricky to do so, given that. That land. To the left of the. To the north, if you will, has been designated as a park. So we'd have an uphill battle to try to use any of that for parking.
Right, that's not what's contemplated.
Correct, and then you've got the basketball court today, which is used quite often as overflow parking, so.
Yep, and that is, that is a permitted use under the special permit for this building's use, as well as accommodating the parking, this. Required for the use of that ramp to the wetlands. Required for the use of that ramp to the wetlands.
Hmm.
So that's why I'm always mindful about, I'm always mindful about people trying to change the. This parcel without understanding what it takes to stay in compliance with the zoning bylaws of the year in which the project was approved.
So that would be my next question, what's wrong with the land to the right of it that's not part of the basketball court that we already own? Converting that into a parking.
To the right of one.
Is that what we're talking, the road going out back, it's everything to the left is the park, right?
Yeah.
Everything to the right is part of this parcel. There seems to be a decent amount of land there.
Oh, yeah, the question is whether or not we're at the point where we want to give away all the greenery because there are events that are held there. And right now it is just used primarily a number of times a year, election overflow and things of that nature. But, you know, it's not every day you you have a neighbor that's willing to have a discussion. About whether or not, you know. That part of that back lot is something that uh might fit into our overall plan. For expanding our parking area, and you know something, Jason, we may end up needing both places.
Uh, Carl, I'm looking at the twenty nine thousand dollar just to let Levec study. And I know that.
Well, it's not a study, it's an actual scope.
Uh, scope board.
That actually does all the nuts and bolts and the approvals.
It's still twenty nine thousand.
Oh, absolutely.
With the upcoming budget, I have the finance chairs here.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, and the stuff that's been said right in the papers.
Yeah.
I'm, I'll tell you right now, I'm, I'm a no. On this one right now, not right now, we're still negotiating contracts, I'm I'm a hundred percent no on this one.
Are you willing to have a walkthrough with them and look at it? Any of that stuff, or do you just want to?
Me personally.
That opportunity now.
Me personally? I'll I'll let my other board members speak, I'm I'm. I'll listen to what they have to say, but I'm. I'm ninety nine percent no, unless I hear some reason that. Somebody can really sell me on.
Don't want for me to give you that reason.
I'm not, I'm not, I just want to.
Parking is a problem, because I've circled around a number of times myself during the day trying to find. Someplace to put my car, I have ended up in the bank and walked across the fence.
I would rather give that money to our police officers. Or the people that we're negotiating contracts with, I am not for spending money on a parking lot. Period.
When does this have to be decided?
Oh, I think it's.
It can, it can float.
I think it's something you put.
Yeah, we have time, I mean, my issue wasn't, it's not like we were going to go to a town meeting and appropriate money and do it. It's like, it's still something you could put on some sort of a list of things to consider as a.
I wouldn't mind putting it on a list for down the road, I but it says.
Right, and that's all we're trying to.
Because it says in the agenda, review and approve. Proposed parking expansion.
Right.
So that's, right now, I'm not for approving anything like that.
Okay, so that's fine, so. We could obviously contemplate other steps.
Designated parking?
I think you just have to say.
I need other steps from what you want to do.
I think you just got to break it down into smaller chunks, right? So first is, I think we can all agree. Looking at you, kid, we can all agree there's a dearth of parking at town hall to death. Yes?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So then, and and in principle, can this go into a budget discussion? Because it 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 may not be direct funded, you know, there's a uh. There was a study on the former state auditor bump. That detailed in quite a lot of detail, actually, the. The screwing that Western Mass takes from other town, other areas as far as munis- investments in municipal buildings. Along with chapter ninety, so there was talk in in a future legislative session to have um. A building authority similar to what the school building authority is to fund municipal projects. So, I mean, certainly our DPW is going to fall into that if that project ever gets off the ground, you know, a future DPW facility to replace the. There's that turnkey word that we got um from the former suburban Chevrolet, but you know, something like this would be a minor project or there may be a grant available. Because, you know, the seniors use this facility quite a lot, um, and unless that were to change, you know. Perhaps it's eligible under some kind of grant program to look at it, I think in principle, I think it's not a bad idea to hear out any. Any way to increase the parking.
I'll hear out anything.
Yep, so I think that's where I'm I'm kind of getting to right now, I hear you, we, we don't have the authority to spend twenty nine thousand dollars even if we wanted to. It has to go to town meeting, so it's got to get a budget, a finance committee recommendation. Also as part of that process, so we can't. We don't have free cash or any money sitting around, even in the gift account.
Right now, I'm not going to approve this, I know that.
We're already giving up some grass, potentially if. Pickleball courts go through, correct?
That's in the park.
Right.
That's in the park.
Across over here.
Okay, that's going to be in the park, you're right, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's a hard and a stabilized service.
Right.
Yeah.
And again, that that's going to be another thing that you're going to have. If you build it, they're going to come.
Yeah, I know.
And now you're going to have more people.
I know, parking in the grass here. I know.
So that's why, I know when I mentioned this to Jason, I was talking about, well, you know, when you go through the fence line here, you get stuff. This area behind here along there, but that's like, that used to be an old lay down yacht for public works, it was all cleaned out.
Where's the um, walkway down to the creek, is it right here on?
Right at the corner.
Yeah, yeah, that's right there, so because here's your court.
Yeah.
And this court acts as your parking, your allocated.
Oh, there it is.
Places under the planning board regulations.
Damn, you're connected to their stuff.
She's, she's got the printout of the same, you have it in color.
I got.
So.
I love the GIS.
So people are going to be parking in the grass.
I mean, I don't think, no.
They do now for volleyball.
John, look at, the land's not going anywhere right now, John still, it's not like it's, he's getting ready to sell it or anything like that. He just said that he's open to the idea of having that discussion.
Jason's looking for a convincing argument, so I'm just throwing out a few.
Losing a little bit of grass is not going to convince me.
No, but there are going to be, there's going to be more people coming here.
I I, oh.
Then we already have.
Talked about what is, I mean, with a little bit of. Tree removal and cleaning here, we do have a decent chunk of spot we can use it.
It's wet.
So what?
Conservation's not going to.
Well, where's, we've got our wetland lines here.
Right, yeah, can you see the wetlands? It's pretty deep.
Yeah, well. This, yeah.
All right, let's carry this under old business for our next meeting, I don't think anyone's opposed to researching this.
I'm not opposed to researching anything.
And I, I'm not getting out over my skis on that, but.
If. We have these discussions with people and we have these opportunities. Of course, we're going to bring it and put it in front of you because you're never going to have too many of these opportunities.
And this is something that, I mean, I know this has been talked about for. Eight or nine years so far that this conversation was kind of bubbling along, so. It it's not going to be done tomorrow, it's not going to be done next week, and then it it also gives us an opportunity to go ahead and look to a way to fund it too. So from the study part, and I'm going to stay out of the, you know, how it's going to be acquired or anything else for obvious reasons, but as far as looking at it from. What needs to be done.
Right.
Carry it forward. Is that all right with you?
That's absolutely fine.
Thank you, sir.
T-Mobile grant for the senior center pickleball courts parking.
I don't know if we can use it for a parking lot, I'll have to re- review that.
It's for the community benefit.
Yeah.
All right, so let's approve the Southwick Police Chief. Uh, we have a letter here from Police Chief Robert Landis, uh, requesting support from the board. To pursue a mental health grant in partnership with the towns of Granville and Talon. And the Behavioral Health Network. Um, and actually, we, this was talked about at that round table we went to, or the luncheon we were at.
We already, that's already used, this same system is used to the north of us, my place of employment.
So if if accepted a non-binding memorandum of understanding, we draft between the town of Southwick and the BHN crisis program. Southwick would be the host community and manage the grant, so this is uh. They're going to.
And the police department would be managing the grant?
Apparently. Southwick would be the host and manage.
So if you approve it, just make sure it's contingent upon them administering.
So I'd entertain a motion for the police department to enter into a grant application. With Talon and Granville and for the Southwick Police Department to manage said grant.
Good.
Um, I just want to let everybody know that the purpose of this. Is the co-response program, it allows them to have a. It's a mental health. Uh, clinician, social worker, somebody that also goes out with the police, so they. Similar to what they're doing north of us and like what they do, other towns have put together a non-police. Designated group, but I just wanted to, so people could understand what the co-response team is.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a group of police officers as well as mental health people to go out together to respond to people in crisis. So I would make the motion to uh. Let the police go forward with the. Uh, what do we got here, what do we actually calling it again?
Grant.
The grant. The application for BHN for the co-response program.
And to have the police department manage.
And to have the police department manager.
Second.
Doug Morgan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we, under new business, we knocked out the first one already, thank you, Jeff. So review letter from Lucky Stop, Moni Shaw looking for a full liquor license. We have a chart. In our packet, I think it was this week or was it last week? They all run together.
Yeah, I.
Do we even have one for someone to apply for?
We don't.
No.
No, I think that they've. Wouldn't have discussed it before, I think they're wondering if. If at some point the board is going to have a um. A a review of um, how it wants to deal with the license structures and whether or not you want to pursue. Any other types of licenses from an overall economic development. Uh, plan point of view, so maybe that's something that EDC's got in the chat. To see whether or not, hey, are there certain locations in town that lend themselves to a different licenser type style? That would then allow those businesses to be able to have other opportunities. That they don't have right now, because of the limitations placed by the ABCC. And the only way to do that is generally through a special act of the law system.
So shall we send a letter back to Mr. Shaw to that effect at this time? I mean, certainly a conversation, we, you know, we had talked about, I think it was at a previous meeting where we were talking about. You know, other towns that have a significant number of licenses above what. What we have even for population, but it's, you know, a lot of restaurants and stuff like that. Um, that have them, and um. I want to say it was. Four or five years ago. We did have an applicant for a beer and wine that we turned down. And we successfully defended at the ABCC, I believe, on appeal. Because we felt at the time that. The town of Southwick was adequately served, I believe.
Litmus test under the staff.
Correct, so I believe, and if that is the litmus test, I believe Ocean State had applied for a beer and wine. And the board voted against it. Um, being that we had. Millie's at one corner, Lucky Stop here, we felt we were adequately served already.
Mm-hmm.
Um. They appealed, they did not, they were not successful in their appeal, so I guess we would have to look at it before we would go ahead with. Any of the process to say, given the number of. Full liquor stores we already have, are we adequately served in the in the town?
That's one of the whole reasons, I know, it's run along with the lines of the EDC. What we can look at for businesses, if there are, you know, if if they come forward and say, hey, we've got this many. And it's worth something to look at, then yes, but I think we should look at it, figure out what works best, I mean, we've. You've been involved in these, so.
It it's also, I mean, just, this is my opinion. It's also not, I don't believe it's our business to pick winners and losers.
No, no, no.
But I think that there does come a point where. It becomes painfully obvious that when you add one more, especially when you're the licensing authority and you add one and it would be to the, the pie is already. The way it is and you're just going to make the pie smaller, because if you added someone else selling beer and wine. In the co- in the town. I I don't think you suddenly increase your beer and wine sales thirty or forty percent.
Off fronts.
Yeah, I just don't think you increase sales by that much, that would drive, that would make it worthwhile, so. First, and and just to count, you know, to counteract, so say a restaurant, another restaurant came that had a unique spin on something or what have you, and. We felt it would be a draw. And it was, it was potentially a draw from economic development, they would actually draw people into the community, and so then we would need. But we don't have any liquor licenses to put up. Right now, well, we would then, maybe it would be in everyone's in interest to to make that appeal to the ABCC for or. To to the, our legislative delegation for home rule legislation to get another one. Because of the economic driver that that would be, and it it's incidental to the restaurant operation, but they need it, right? But it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily be to the detriment of anyone, it would be incremental, and I think that's where we, where we can add some value. Well, spoken up about that. Uh, discussion. Only discussion, no vote, no spending of money, Jason. Uh, increasing capital expenditures classification threshold amount from one thousand to five thousand dollars per outside order. Recu- uh, recommendation.
Yeah, we've been looking, uh, talking about this for a while, Laura had uh. Had asked me to look into it and I did speak to the outside auditor and he, you know, this would be helpful to her, so.
It makes sense to me.
It does. Then would this, what would the, this would be something that would, right now, anything over a thousand dollars goes in front of the capital expenditures committee?
Well, still.
And now it would be a five thousand dollar threshold.
Well, no. The capital expenditures committee threshold is twenty five thousand dollars, useful lifespan of three or more years.
Again, leading the witness, just to get that on the record, thank you.
Oh, okay. Why don't you just ask me, you don't have to call me a witness.
It's kind of hard doing it this way, though. So I don't, I don't see any issue with this, given. Especially at the rate of inflation, something that was a thousand, is that a five thousand dollars anyway?
We can just carry it, what we can do is carry it forward. Um, you can take a vote and carry it forward to next, next meeting and then do a second vote.
Okay, so we want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to carry this forward to the second, to the next meeting.
I think we've got to vote in the affirmative to have a second vote at the next meeting.
I'll second it.
And then I'll make a motion to do it, yeah.
To be clear, we're going to vote in the affirmative and carry it to the next meeting to vote again, that's the motion, anyone want to second the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Doug Morgan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Thank you.
Uh. Discuss requests for hunting bylaw, so this came in from the town clerk. I saw, and it was a little late for the town meeting. And, but I figured it warrants discussion. And I did actually speak to the lieutenant about this, he's on too, isn't he? So we can put him right on the spot.
He is.
Um. Hi, Lieutenant.
Lieutenant Banish? Can you log on and speak to the group?
Right, front and center, but anyway, so. Uh. I believe it was Ms. Frifty had sent a tale of woe. To somebody who supposedly had approval to hunt on a property verbally. And then left a tree stand. Which this person, and I may be messing up the facts, so bear with, but they basically said, okay. They took down the tree stand because it was on their property and it appeared abandoned. They then got sued in small claims court for the value. So they had to cross complaint for the demolition and uh, disposal of said tree stand. And I don't know the actual outcome of the court case, um. In the end, the hunter dropped his claim at court, in the interest of neighborhood peace, she dropped her counterclaim, so what this does now, though, is. There's a proposal in front of us, it's not a citizen petition for a bylaw at this point. Um, it's just a request that the select board maybe take it up as a town bylaw. To adopt a law similar to the hunting bylaw in the town of Talon. And it's very simple, no person shall hunt on any public or private property in town of Talon. Without written permission of the owner of the land upon which hunting will take place, so if you've got it, if someone has it. You get it in writing, it says, I give. Ingo, permission to hunt on my land and. If anybody ever says anything, she produces said letter and go, I have permission.
My relatives have written.
Correct, I saw him in Jersey all the time, correct, you know? And then usually it says, please extend all, whatever.
What you ought to do is refer this to the police department, have them review with the EPO and then. Make a recommendation if we're going to have a bylaw in in May.
Okay?
That would be the thing.
I think that's an excellent idea that.
Then you'd be moving the issue along.
Lieutenant, I see that you've come off mute, do you have any thoughts on this matter?
Not really, I mean, we spoke about it the other day, um. You know, the fact that the woman got sued, unfortunately, anyone can sue anyone at any time for just about anything, whether or not it's a legitimate claim is another story. Um, you know, by virtue of her having those signs up. You know, that person should have never been in there without at least verbal permission.
I think that was the, the basis of the discussion was that they felt that they did have it. And and. Yeah, whatever, but I think this makes it all that much more clear, if someone has it. And, you know, I, my suggestion is that it would, it would have an ending date too on it as well, so if the land transfers or. What have you, they're good for a year or two or three, but uh, our uh, current. Thought process is to refer this to the police department for their recommendation. Thought process is to refer this to the police department for their recommendation, after you guys consult and maybe consult with the E P O.
Yeah, not a problem. We can definitely consult with environmental and get their take on it. Uh, as far as your earlier question, that is Sergeant Miles, uh, for the used car dealer as well.
What I thought, thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for that. I shall reach out to Mr. Miles, Sergeant Miles directly. So would anybody like to make a motion to refer this bylaw and carry under old business and send it to the police department for their recommendation?
I'll make the motion to, uh. I wonder why I'm having such trouble talking today. Refer this to the police department for their review. And say it again.
And recommendation.
Uh, we got you. Wanna second his motion?
Can't talk today.
Doug Mogul, I.
Jason Peron, I.
Dan Geller.
Great. Carl, any new business?
Yeah, I just wanna let you know, we have, uh, after COVID and some changes of mind, we've reinstituted our. Safety Subcommittee, and that's being chaired by the Health Director. As our right to know a person, so we're going through a lot of issues with police and fire facilities and other. Major departments that will help us evaluate loss control issues, risk management issues, uh. Pursue grants, develop policies, things along that nature that will make us a better member of Maya in good standing.
Great.
Big fancy stuff, but necessary.
No, it needs to be done. And I know that the, the town's also had the A E D training and C P R training.
Yeah, you did all that.
Different departments.
All the go bags have been all, um, re, uh, examined and updated with all the materials. And then, of course, we did the public facilities, uh, training, our buildings, through a Maya grant. And now we're actually, we're going through a work order, uh, an application for a, uh. Uh, work order system type, um.
That's an excellent idea.
Yes. So that's when I hit the new business.
Uh, one of those. Work orders, I joke with Carl because it was a suggestion with buildings and grounds and communicative. Communication with other departments and other department heads regarding status of work and where stuff is in a queue of work to be done. And. Half the battle in that is not just getting the actual work done, but communicating when said work will happen. And it just, you know, a work, you know, whether you have a work order system or a spreadsheet or an email or. Carbon copy paper doesn't really matter if, if everybody can get to it and see it. Um. But the fact that you know where you stand as to where things are, emergencies happen and everything else, this will be beneficial for that.
But not only that, it'll help to determine whether or not something is in fact, a routine issue for. Now they want a whole wall or a project, and you're like, man, that you gotta put in the budget. Can't use this process. To not go through the budget and ask for something that's a bigger dollar threshold.
Any other new business there? Sir?
I have none.
Diane? I got none either. Old business. Dispensary, I did copy you on that email. We did, Jason and I received their request again for a host agreement. Is it in our folder this week again? From, uh, Holyoke Cannabis. Um, I'm assuming we're gonna wait until after town meeting votes and that we actually have a zone that somebody could potentially put one.
That's what you.
Before we enter those negotiations, and then we'll take it from there. No objection from anyone on this. Okay. Uh, select board goals and objectives, any updates tonight?
None.
None.
Review of land license, that's on me. I need to sit with Darcy. We talked about this a little bit. Um, but I wanna have another meeting with, I wanna have a meeting with her and, and kinda. Socialize it with some thoughts, and then come back for you guys. Uh, recruitment panel, I haven't heard back from the M D L. So recruitment panel. We did good work last week. We did execute, uh, as I emailed you guys. Uh, factually, that we did execute the contract with the.
Correct.
The one company that was selected by us unanimously.
And they were developing all the information they need in terms of giving them the names of the committee members and yourselves. Reach out to you, and they're gonna be scheduling a, a time with those department heads. And then they're also gonna schedule time with myself, maybe, because they also want, want to hear from me.
Imagine that. I would imagine they would, Carl. Okay. T-Mobile hometown grants, application review authorization and pursuit.
Spoke with Cindy Sullivan today. She's brought, she brought forward the, um. Uh, they need the fence in the softball field is, uh, need to be for, moved for regulation, and the other one was the, um. There's been a request for a sun shade, um, for the playground area. And, uh, so those are the things nobody else has really come forward with anything that I think would, uh. Probably be approved. And the boathouse was kind of a, an iffy thing. Um, but, uh, she's gonna be putting together all the required paperwork, the plans, uh. Financials, um, and we need three letters of, other than herself and I, myself, two, three other stakeholders from the. Community, um, so she'll be looking for people to, uh, write letters to, uh. Support her reaching out, uh, trying to get those. And then, once I have all the information, the application packet will be submitted, and we'll see if we get it.
Personally, I think the sun shade one is a winner. Of all, because it went on something they can take a picture of in front of and advertise the heck out of it.
I know.
That's why I thought the boathouse.
I know somebody who.
Same thing with moving a softball fence. Yeah, but like moving the softball fence is a great idea, it needs to be done. But it's gonna look exactly like the others, the same fence we have, except ten feet in the other direction. But a sun shade, that, that might be.
Well, you know, I, I have heard.
We can put a T-Mobile sign, um.
Well, I, I would almost laugh. No, you cannot.
Oh.
No, it's actually in the deed for Wally Park. No advertising of any kind.
That kinda, I'm saying it, yeah, without maybe putting on the poll itself.
I've seen some like on specific events where they might stretch that, but it's in the deed.
Yeah, you don't see anything for a liver.
Nope, like even they can't sell banners based on the fences or whatever to, you know, interstate building supply or something like that.
Yeah, the rocks aren't supposed to do that.
But they can't, at the Wally Park, it's in the deed. It's an interesting deed, by the way, if you ever get ten minutes to read it. Um. Okay, here or there?
Richard wrote it.
Yes, God rest his soul. Okay, let's move to the special town meeting warrant. We got an updated version of it right here. Uh, based on the, and I apologize, I did not make the planning board meeting last week.
There's another one there.
Eh?
No, there was two of them there. Uh, she got one.
Let's get one.
I was gonna ask you to give him one, since there's gonna be financial articles. So you have them two, Jason, you have one.
I have one, yeah. That's right there. I have it in my email, alright.
Let's see, it's there.
So.
Being lazy.
So just to be clear, Article One is still, the town will vote to accept Mass General Law sixty-four, chapter three. And we're recommending three percent. Uh, Article Two is a new article. Which, from watching the planning board meeting last week, basically just removes. And, uh, from chapter one eighty-five, thirty-five dot two, remove section C. Six, which, which is the prohibited use of marijuana retailers. Then, Article Three. If passed. Completely amends one eighty-five, thirty-five dot two, as I'm reading it, by redefining. To come into compliance more with the, uh, the triple C and what they consider a marijuana retailer, et cetera, and where they would be located. Um, and it also establishes for a bond, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, then Article Four is the zone change for. One fifty-seven Feeding Hills Road. And then Article Five is a CPC article, two hundred and eight thousand dollars for the pickleball courts. At Wally Park. Six is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for pickleball courts at Frifty Park. And Article Seven, um. Is at a previous meeting, the board voted to do these composition chains in the content. That was something that you had voted on at a previous meeting. Okay. I really think that should be done at an annual meeting, in front of the, in front of the, after town election.
I, you have.
It's my opinion.
Well, I think while we have it here, we should do. It was already voted on by the town. This is statute.
If, you know, I know we had to go through the review, and if we're at that point where it's all been reviewed and this is. What we need to do to move it forward, you're right, the, the vote we've made at the annual town meeting to do this. So, I would say, you should just put it forth for the people.
It'll take a year from there.
Okay.
It's gonna happen one way or another, so. And, so this is what it looks like substantially, and I know, I'm not sure if Ben. Mark Beglane and John are fine tuning their parts a little bit more, so, but the board should be. Endorsing this as recommended by, subject to town council, um, approval and. Finishing of minor details, and this is what you'll be signing this weekend.
This is the one that just came over sitting here, right?
Correct, right before this evening's meeting, then I had Lisa print out.
And to be clear, previous drafts of this special town meeting warrant article did not have Article Seven.
Correct.
That is correct. And earlier versions had an Article Six.
Correct, that was.
Salary reserve, on, on, and that is determined not to be needed by the town account. So, yes, one could say there were a, a good number of iterations of this document. So that's why you should be spending as much time you need to this evening, going through this to make sure that you have the trumpet level before you. There, you know, come in and sign this week.
Do you have any other question? Sure.
That's, that's the finance guy, Joe D B two five eight Feeding Hills Road. Um, Article One, the three percent, is that forever? Is there a limit?
You'd have to come in back in front of town meeting to change it.
Okay, so.
The three percent's the most you can do.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it was, it's there, it's there.
Yeah, it's, it's based on a Department of Revenue guideline bulletin.
Right.
The three percent is the maximum, I believe.
Right, well, that's the state changes, so I think it's there. No.
I hear you, I hear you there.
So, when they ask, I just wanna.
Yes, unless the state were to change the regulations through Department of. Doc, would you like to have a copy of the Department of Revenue document with the bulletin?
No, sir.
With me, glad to give you more paperwork.
So, just out of curiosity, if the state changes the law.
Your, your name's on the record, please.
I'm sorry. You know, so that thing, Dr. T J Ron, we have to go back, the state changes the law, we have to go back and do another bylaw.
Right. We're changing.
Um, well, this is the bylaw, this is a, this is a local acceptance. But yeah, we have. A bylaw has other, more steps with Attorney General.
If the state changes it, we have to go back and.
It's always tricky. You're right, and I, I'll.
That's it.
We have to reach back out to council, because I don't remember the last answer I got on that, because if you have two lawyers, you'll have exactly both answers.
Obviously, it's not.
I know.
It's true, right? No, but they're.
Well, look at what they did with the host community agreements.
True, but also if you accept, like, if you accept chapter sixty-four N, section three, and in five years. They redefine sixty-four N, chapter three.
Yeah.
To be something completely different. Where does that leave you? And I, I'll have to check with town council as to what that means, because we have plenty of. There are plenty of laws we've accepted in town that the underlying law may very well have changed. I don't know that anybody keeps up with it. No, it's, it's a good question. It really is a good question. Okay.
The finance, uh, Joe, the finance meeting tomorrow night, going over the warrants.
What's his comments, thoughts? Jason?
I read over, says what it is to say.
I'm good.
Alright, so this is subject to any other things that town council might adjust, but it looks like he's made John's. Uh, items there, but I, I'm gonna, obviously, I wanna check with John, just to make sure that he's a. That, uh, that this reflects what the, uh, the chairman of the planning board, what bad could have been done. Because these are all just different pieces of legislation going to the floor for their votes. What did you say, Doug? You thought this town meeting would be twenty minutes?
Well, well, now that we have, well, it's gonna be longer than that now, because you're gonna have spirited debate on Article Seven, I assure you. And that's not the, I. Just to be clear, from, in my opinion, Article Seven is a motion of this board, not an outcome from town meeting. I think the Attorney General was clear that that was not what was asked at town meeting. Then there was a motion and a second from this board. To request this to change the composition and weaken the authority of the select board. Um, and as is the right of the select board to do it, and they're sending it to a town meeting. Personally, I think this should be an annual town meeting. Item, but, um, I am but one member on the board.
Why would it?
Because you generally have a, a, a greater discourse and debate and a larger turnout at the annual. And this, this, the impetus was from a citizen petition at the annual, along with, um. Another citizen petition that was, uh, not successful at town meeting. I think if, the annual meeting is usually. A more customary place to have this type of debate. Point taken, that it will probably take plus a year to get this in front of the legislature anyway. But this was a, this was a two to one vote to put this on the warrant to be heard at a special. I think it, it would be more appropriate to have it on the annual. Um, but that's just my opinion, and like I said, I am but one vote. And I, and I do realize, and, and. It is what it is. So it will be on the, the special, based on if we all agree to vote to send this warrant or to sign this warrant. Uh, when do we have to vote to sign the warrant? Or we just come in and sign the warrant?
Yeah, well, you should do it tonight, because you're not gonna, it's gonna be post the Friday.
So, I'd put a motion on the floor, looking for a second, um. To remove Article Seven and put it forth for the annual. Would anyone like to second that motion? Hearing none, motion dies for lack of a second. It'll be on the warrant. So then we need a motion at this point to approve the warrant.
I would make a motion to approve the warrant as presented, uh, pending any minor.
Right, we wanna have that discretion for town.
Uh, that town council might bring forward.
Yeah.
Um, for all the articles presented.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, Doug Mogul, I.
Jason Peron, I.
Dan Geller.
On purpose, I'm gonna get out here. What did I skip? I didn't go through the rest of all.
Reschedule twelve four.
Yeah, I did see that, the, the meeting right there.
Yeah, because you, you would be having a consent, because you're. Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm getting back to that. Discuss cancellation or rescheduling of December fourth, select board meeting. Due to a special town meeting on December fifth that's now gonna run all night. Consent agenda for twelve five at five forty-five. You guys okay with that?
But unless the recruiters need us to be here for something, I.
Well, then we.
Well, you'd be doing. You'd be doing recruitment discussions usually individually with the vendor anyway, wouldn't be doing as a group. So you, you wouldn't be doing that.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
You know?
I have no problem with that.
I mean, ultimately, the, so, the committee, the selection committee may end up having a meeting at some point. I have already taken the liberty of developing a draft agenda that accomplishes a myriad of actions to the establishment of the Canadian.
Sure you have.
Did I miss anything else?
Um, can we make a decision on the protocols and get rid of this?
Okay.
You guys have to choose one of the two options on number seven. On page. six. I'm sorry, it's actually on page seven. So all of the formatting and typographical crap I've just noted here on my copy to give Lisa, the content is solid except for the choice of number seven.
This is on protocols?
Yes.
This is right here? This one, these two, right? One or the other? Is that what you're saying?
Number seven. Page seven on seven. That's, that can't be on there. There has to be a, um, well, it can be, but if there's some, some boards and commissions that remember appointed by the select board. Well, we just blew up the conservation commission, but the, uh, number seven is actually described in mass general law, how you would remove a commissioner, I believe. I don't know if that'll any longer apply once we have a special act, but, um, forgot this section. I knew it off the top of my head for the annual.
Borrowed from a number of other towns.
Well, you were flying when you did this one. Posted.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Okay.
It was probably on my. It was probably on the phone.
Well, you won't do that to me. What the word?
I know, it was only that, that character only, I know.
Yeah, so was it moving and adding? Is that what happened?
I have no idea. We'll fix it when I give the.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Yeah, you're right.
I said it was probably on my phone. It lets auto correct and make up things.
Really? You did this stuff on a phone?
I might have.
I never do it on a phone.
This definitely looks like it was done on a phone, because this is a my stuff would fully can do on a phone.
Change a line of words.
I know what that's like too.
Fat fingers.
Yeah, definitely.
I think you have to go with number seven. You can't have, I don't, I don't like number seven alternate either because you may have, um,
Well, seven is what you've got right now.
Appointed by them.
Why don't we say on number seven, the simpler form, subject to mass general law, comma, the select board, they.
Sure.
And then whatever.
Number seven doesn't read right either, because that would only allow you to remove appointees of your own.
Correct.
True. My, my point is, is that if, let's say there was someone who was not coming to meetings and there was a hearing to remove them, but you weren't on the board when they were appointed, because they're in a three-year term and you're in your first year term. The way I read the alternate, you wouldn't be eligible to remove them.
Well, if you're not using.
That's one with all the wrong words in it anyway.
You don't need to debate.
I was gonna go.
Just take the amendments when you do this work out on, on the other one.
Seven is fine.
Do you know if we heard back on this, uh, S R O? The second S R O.
The grant?
Yeah, I think we did.
We got shut down.
In the last, I think he notified you and I in the last two weeks. That's public information now then, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Second.
We don't have a second.
Second. We only have one. It was second. Somebody asked me and I, I knew the answer, but I didn't know if it was fit for public consumption yet. So now that it is.
It was authorized application by you to go forward.
Sometimes there's a pre notification and an official notification. So what do you wanna vote on that?
Um, that would be great. And then I can just give this.
I will make a motion to accept the, uh, new select board protocols as revised, uh, and presented today.
I'll second that.
Doug Mog and I.
Jason Perron, hi.
Dan Gill, hi.
We hate anyone. We can always come back and do it again.
Right.
I think old business, Carl.
Uh, let's see. So I had a, um, let's see, a, a while ago, the board authorized a community compact grant to the state for our I T issues, issues relating to, um, cybersecurity, multi-factor authorization, a whole amount of sweeping protocols with, uh, software packages as well as equipment. And as part of that, we, um, do have, um, a granting agency is receptive to giving us about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. But wanted to make sure that we were okay with the other parts, because our grant application was for like a hundred and sixty-one thousand in year one. And then other dollar amounts in year two and three, so they're willing to give us essentially about half of what we're looking for. And these are, um, this has been identified that we have to do this, because some of these issues are gonna relate to our ability to develop policies that the police department wants to have in place and also that our insurance company would, is gonna wanna have in place under our cybersecurity policy coverage. So our commitment would be about thirteen thousand for the remainder of this year, which we would do at a special before the annual. And then from a capital planning point of view, we'll have to do an obligation for seventy-one thousand, three hundred dollars for the next two fiscal years. You would be doing this anyway. So this, this way, you're essentially gonna get about half of it paid for through a grant through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So this is what we sent back today to the Commonwealth, to their number two man at the Department of Revenue. So I wanted to make sure the board understands that it's something we need to do. Yes, it's gonna be dollars. Yes, it's gonna have a budgetary impact, but we can't not do this. Okay, because when things like this go wrong, they have serious repercussions. And from a risk management point of view and from a Maya point of view and cybersecurity policy coverage, this is something that the, um, Sergeant Miles is contacting me about every, every so often that has to be addressed. So this is what I worked out with the managed service provider and our I T people today. So I just wanted you to be aware of what had happened. Okay?
And we had, we had gotten a, uh, our first community compact grant was five years ago?
And we, and we had to pay over forty thousand. That, that was an I T one. And we had to leverage that one with over forty thousand dollars worth of funds too.
The wrinkle on now is well, at the time we bought some firewalls, pure fire and can combine some stuff here. We also did another subsequent grant with E O T S S. E Y Ts, um, to do some cybersecurity training. So everybody, I don't know if you were on, you probably got a tail end of it. You didn't get any, but they had, you'd get an email saying you have to complete this exercise if you have a town email and you have to go through and do the class and
We just filed.
Then they also go through and they would do a test. And try to, and if you clicked on the link, you've got a big, you know, bomb exploding on your screen that we got you. Don't do that again. Had this been a real thing, you would have screwed the town type of thing. And we just signed up to do that again.
Yeah, you were just okay with it at your last meeting.
Correct.
To do it again.
But, um, you know, you've been reading about these things in the paper everywhere from big companies to governments to people. Um, you've just gotta be a little bit paranoid and vigilant and.
This all goes toward reducing your.
The wrinkle on this particular deal is, and it, where it wasn't as, it was a little bit the last time, but it's more so now is that if we're awarded the community compact grant, as Carl alluded to, it kinda obligates the town for expense in future years. So.
Which we would have to do.
You would have to do it anyway, so you reduce the expense, but you have to go into it eyes wide open. You need to talk to the. Correct. And the thing the finance pair is here, because, you know, you have to, uh, you know, you don't wanna obligate anybody to anything without having a discussion about it first. So.
That's the way I work.
Correct. Last time, uh, you know, the first community compact grant we did wasn't, wasn't dissimilar, but the, the dollars have to move around a little bit here.
But we still knew that going. No, absolutely. And we knew we were putting that in the capital budget. And we did it. We executed it. Got done.
Yep.
And that had to do with reducing the number of access points into our system. Cause that was another issue we had determined. We had special outside entities come in and do inventories about how to access the system and where, and where our weak points were.
Some of them you can talk about, some of them we can't, but there were things, just, you just don't talk about that stuff, but it's just, um, we, they did a vulnerability study before we did anything and, um, there was nightmare fuel, to be honest with you. And then, uh, you know, we've gotten a lot better, but there's always improvements that you need to continue to make.
Right, and, and the police are very good at at identifying issues that that have, that have to be worked on, because they have certain databases that they just cannot allow people to. Would you agree with that in your installation, in your professional one?
I get those emails. Even now, even not being at work, I get the constant, you need to finish this cybersecurity. And they're all the same tests, just given seventeen different ways.
It's the same one. I mean, and, you know, the police are doing the same one with E Y Ts that we're doing.
Right, but think about what Lenora goes through in your organization.
But I'm sure you've gotten emails through the town email of, hey, click here to reset your Microsoft password. Obviously someone trying to grab your credentials. We get those every single day.
You're getting them on your home.
We just gotta be more vigilant. Anyway, other new business, it's getting late.
That was it for me.
Jason?
Uh, nothing new, nothing old.
Diane? Okay. Uh, well, I have two quick ones. One is, uh, I wanna thank everyone, the B F W, the Legion, Civic Fund, uh, everyone who had a part in planning and executing for that, uh, Veterans Day parade this past weekend. Weather was gorgeous, a little windy, but better than snow like we've had in previous years. Um, great event. Thank you, Senator Marks and Representative Baldiga for coming out for that event as well. Uh, Friday afternoon, I happened to be at the fire department in the morning and happened to get a sneak peek that our new police boat is actually in town. Still has a little bit of work to do, but it's around, so took a long time to get here, just in time for the lake to freeze over, but, uh, it's here. Um, and as Carl, you mentioned about the S R O grant. Um, I also want to congratulate the, the fire department. Um, they had a recognition ceremony on, on Friday. An event on Friday evening to recognize Matt Grau and Dave Smith's retirement, plus they went over some of the, uh, the promotions that we were able to get to a couple of weeks ago, because we snuck out at seven o'clock. That was the night you weren't there, Jason, so. We've got the whole meeting.
Quiet.
And, uh, and then, um, they also gave out some awards to some firefighters, um, for, uh, heroic acts beyond the regular call of duty, especially around, um, that fatal incident that happened out on Route fifty-seven earlier this year. Um, that's all I got. We are not having an executive session?
No, sir.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make the motion to adjourn meeting.
Doug Mog and I?
Jason Perron, hi.
Dan Gill, hi.
Good night, folks.